Okay, we'd like to call this meeting to order. And welcome everyone to the August meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or for more information, and a simple majority vote that the members present will decide on your request. If you are here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. And Mr. Faust, if you will begin with the vote call.
Jones, Zawerko.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Doan.
Here.
Nightingale.
Present.
Hanley, Caloris, Taggert. We have a quorum.
And the first item on our agenda as always is approval of minutes. We have minutes of the July 28 meeting. Do I hear any corrections or additions or alterations of the minutes? If not...
I mean, support.
It's been moved and supported. We approve the minutes. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the first item on our agenda is case number 150070, site plan review for Menards Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Scott Ralston. On behalf of Menards, 5101 Menards Drive, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, 54703. The matter you have before you tonight is the expansion of our existing block plant facility, which is on Veterans Memorial Parkway in the north side of Saginaw. Menards, or Midwest Manufacturing, is the manufacturing division of Menards. It's part of Menards. We bought the site in approximately 2010. It was formerly the Van Poplin Brothers Concrete Block Manufacturing Facility. Menards acquired the site, as I said, about five years ago, and currently operates it to make concrete blocks and pavers that go out to stores throughout Michigan and beyond to support our retail stores, including the one that's here next to the city of Saginaw and Saginaw Township. Our proposal before you tonight is to expand that facility to add a distribution cross dock building. This is actually a first phase of a couple different buildings we would like to add to the site to make it a larger manufacturing campus for Menards. We operate a number of these facilities throughout the Midwest, and oftentimes there's two, three, or even four different manufacturing functions and distribution functions on one site. So it's our hope that we can turn the Saginaw facility into a larger operation like we have in other areas. And as I said, this proposal is really phase one of that process. I can certainly answer any questions that you have about the project or the site plan specifically. But generally speaking, this distribution cross dock would be attached to the existing building that's there today. It would serve stores throughout the state of Michigan. It would allow us to bring in third-party merchandise from other manufacturers and vendors in the United States. They'd bring that merchandise into the cross dock. We'd split trucks of merchandise up to go out to the individual stores that this facility will serve. And we'd also have the advantage of being able to package the concrete blocks that we're already making on the site with that merchandise and cut down on the number of truck trips that we have to make to serve the stores. So it's certainly a more efficient operation for us. And the really good news is, you know, we'll add 30 or 40 more employees out there to the existing site to make that happen. And, like I said, it would open the door to adding yet another manufacturing operation that I think we'll be proposing to you probably next spring. So with that, obviously, we'd ask your support and approval of the site plan. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to do my best to answer those. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from members of the commission? The other manufacturing would be at the same site or a different?
Um, we would buy another piece of property adjacent to this site and what we're considering is a trust manufacturing facility. It would also include a rail spur, and we'd use Lake State Railway to bring lumber into the property and start a small transload operation there as well. So we've been in contacts with the neighboring property owner and with the railroad about setting that up, and it would be contiguous. It would attach to this property, but it would be off the site that's shown on your site plan. We'll obviously need a little more ground to make that project happen.
Am I right that the rail line that goes past the site now is not actually a spur for you, is it?
Correct. That is, the tracks that cross Veterans Memorial there, that is Lake State's main line that runs past the site into their yard, which is just a mile north of us here, or I guess maybe two or three miles north. And we would add just a small, single-ended siding or spur that would come into the property that we're going to buy to serve this site specifically. I think many years ago, there was a rail spur that came in behind the waste management facility on the east side of the Menards property. This was quite some time ago. I think it was a small switchyard or reload area.
Is that what still shows on this plan? It shows a spur coming in?
So it does show a, you know, the existing line that's on the north side of the property there. And then, as I mentioned, there used to be a spur that came in along the east side of the property, but that doesn't show up on the site plan. The spur would actually end up going on to this other property that we're working on, which is on the north side of the tracks.
Well, it shows a spur here.
Oh, yeah, in the, in the, in the location map. Yeah, I think that's from, that must show the old spur that used to be there 20, 30 years ago. Yep, that doesn't exist. On the site plan itself, on the colored site plan, you know, it shows it accurately. That's actually going to be a detention area for the project. I think that spur was torn out at least 10 years ago, if not longer.
Am I correct that there are going to be two entrances off Veterans Memorial Parkway, the existing entrance, and then this new parking lot? That's an entrance to the parking lot off that memorial?
That, that's what we're showing on the site plan. MDOT controls Veterans Memorial, and so we have been discussing with them the possibility of adding that driveway across from, I think, an existing curb cut that goes to the General Motors facility. There's also, if the state isn't comfortable with that, we also have an option just to bring that team member access from the existing access point that's on the south side of the site. That's shown as Esop Street on the site plan. If for some reason MDOT is not comfortable with that additional access point, we would just rearrange it to bring it in onsite.
If that does work out, this is essentially an employee parking, access to the employee parking lot?
Correct.
Would there be any signage there?
There would. Yep. There would be a small sign next to that parking area that would say team member access, something to that effect, to guide employee and visitor traffic as opposed to the truck traffic which goes inward. So the Esop Street, that access and that gate, those are there today if you drive by the site. So that will remain. The only question is, we could just add a short access drive onto that existing driveway to bring the employees in that way. Or as shown on this site plan, you'd have to get the state to approve a new curb cut on Veterans Memorials if we go with this plan that's shown on the site plan today.
Question from Mr. Faust. You mentioned engineering would look at any possible drainage issues. Are there...
I talked to the engineering department this morning. They're still not totally satisfied, but he assured me that there's nothing that will stop the project. It's just little things that they're not comfortable with, or they just don't understand the site plan and are trying to get further answers on it. But nothing major. Everything that's been at engineering was held up. Beth London was out of the office all last week. So I'm still waiting for anything. I made a special trip over there just to see if they could give me anything today, and I don't have anything. So anything that you do this evening will have to be contingent upon engineering approval.
My next question.
And we're comfortable with that. And I had had a conversation with the engineering department as well, and they had some questions about existing inlets versus proposed, and some things that weren't clear from our engineering plans that our engineers are looking at.
One of the things is they thought that one of the catch basins was out in the right of way, and they wanted to clarify that. It was, they're not major issues.
Just for my own terminology, proposed cross dock? Is this a loading/unloading area?
So in the distribution world, the distinction is a warehouse you actually keep merchandise there and have storage room for it, a cross dock. You'll have an inbound trailer that's attached to a dock door, and they'll take merchandise directly from that trailer to waiting empty trailers that are bound for the stores. So they're really, ideally, they should just be moving merchandise from an inbound trailer onto an outbound trailer and not have any storage in the building. So the term cross dock just means you're just moving that merchandise across an aisle from inbound doors to outbound doors without any storage.
Is it an open-air structure or is it closed?
Nope. It is a closed heated structure. I think this one has, I don't remember the exact number, but there's, I think, about 32 dock doors. But it is an enclosed structure, and there's, you know, overhead doors that will close on all of those docks. It's a fully enclosed building.
So my next question is to Mr. Faust. In the past, when we've had site plans come in for proposed additions or proposed new buildings, we have required exterior elevations of what it's going to look like. Is that still a requirement?
Not that I'm aware of. Let me see if I have anything like that. Actually, I think I do here. What I sent to you was the site plan of the site itself, but I did not have enough of these to send to everyone. But yeah, here it is, right here.
Well, I just want to make sure, because I know we've required other applicants to submit in elevations of their proposed buildings.
I know we have on some, and we have on another one later tonight. I can maybe one that shows all of that right here.
Mr. Taggert is right. He found his answer there.
And not that I'm overly concerned of what it's going to look like, but it is a stipulation we have made in the past.
And as Mike mentioned, I did submit some. Maybe I didn't submit the right number.
Now we have it.
Okay.
And they have lots like that, a lot of the crash doors.
So runoff from the addition?
There will be an expansion. There's an existing detention facility there today that will be moved and expanded for the additional impervious surface. So we will have onsite detention for, I believe your code requires the 10-year event to be detained onsite. And that's one of the items that the engineering department, we had submitted calculations, and I think they're in the process of doing the math, so to speak. But yes, we did submit that info.
Upon approval, when are you going to start on this project?
This being Michigan, we will see. Our hope is still to start this fall, depending on some, you know, permits that have to go to MDEQ and the state and have maybe an unknown turnaround time. Depending on when we have those permits in hand, we would still like to do some grading foundation work, try to get the building enclosed to work over the winter. If for some reason those things don't come in and the weather starts to turn and construction season is all of a sudden over, we may have to wait till the spring. But it is, it's an immediate project in that we want to start as soon as the weather will allow us to start.
So when is the completion date if you start?
If we started this fall, it would be complete by midsummer of next year. If we started next spring, it would be toward the end of next year. It's about a seven-month project, give or take. It'll go faster if we're not doing it over the winter.
So you're looking at the first next year?
If we can get started this fall, I think that's about.
Yeah, we normally ask for a completion date.
Sure.
We'll put that in the proposal as well.
So do we have any other questions or comments?
Any addition labor involved in this?
Yes. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it's 25 or 30 additional jobs.
How many?
25 to 30 versus what's there today for this phase of the project. And then the other project that I mentioned, I think that will be another similar number, maybe a few more. I think ultimately, when everything is completed, the total population on the site will be between 120 and 150 employees by the time we build out everything that we're planning.
And your property extends up to Findlay Street?
The property does. On the southern boundary line, it goes all the way from Veterans to Findlay. On the north property line, there is a waste management facility on Findlay that we don't control or will not own.
Thank you.
How many parking spots in that parking lot? Did I read 66?
Yes. The parking lot for the cross dock and the existing block plant is 66. And there will be another parking lot added for this additional building that I've been talking about to accommodate those extra employees. And the facility typically runs on two shifts, a little more on the first than on the second.
Further questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on case number 150070. Mr. Taggert, you would be good one to make a motion. Go ahead.
The completion was how many months?
Completion date, I ask, was 6-1 of next year.
Depending on start date.
Depending on start date.
Six, six months from the...
June 1 of next year, if they start this fall. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed site plan, case number 15-0070, to expand the existing block and brick plant purchased by Menards.
Smart.
But the contingency, engineering.
Contingent upon, okay, contingent upon that they receive all required approvals from engineering from the city of Saginaw.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
I think we need to add the completion date of 6-1 of next year. We normally do that. With a proposed completion date of 6-1 of 2016 contingent upon their starting date of fall of 2015.
Thank you. Motion stands as amended and amended, and it has been supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Our next case is 0075, site plan review for Luther Manor.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Visker from Land and Resource Engineering out of Grand Rapids, Michigan. And we grew up the plans for, it's Luther Social Services of Michigan doing business as Luther Manor here in Saginaw. And the facility is in need of some improvements, mainly to have a better facility for their, provide better care for their residents, I should say. And to do that, we're looking at adding a couple of building additions around the building, pretty small in nature. And then the more bigger thing is we're in need of more parking. And what we've done is we purchased two properties. One is directly south of the building, and the other is across Morrison Street in the corner of Bank used to be there. So those two lots that we purchased, we're looking to put in new parking for the facility. And to expand a little bit more, we're adding two canopy, drive-through canopies for drop-off and pickup of the residents. There's any...
Could you bring that maybe to one of these so we can, I think, see it a little better?
Kyle, you can set it right up.
Good idea.
So basically, we think on the south, it wasn't an office. Tear that down. Yeah, there was an office here, but it's still the right office.
That's correct. It's still the...
We have a car from the back.
This is, this is still currently a bank, but it's all the owners' post.
Correct.
Is that the drive-through bank facility?
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Yep.
We have the rules there. How much is office?
Is the area to the right there, it's not in gray, it's in white, is that part, one of the properties being purchased now, or do you already have that?
Currently own this property, and it's currently the existing parking lot or part of it. And we're just planning to restructure the parking lot. We're not going to move it.
There's a, there's a little house right adjacent to the property there. Do you own that?
I do not believe we own any of the houses adjacent.
Well, I could ask Lou Pruse to come and speak to that. I'm the Reverend Dr. Lou Pruse. For 25 years, I was senior vice president and in charge of operations and development. I stood here, oh my gosh, I loved every time I stood here, for all the times, whether it was Manor, or it was Neighborhood House, or it was Action Thrift Store, changing, growing. We don't own the first one, then we owned the lot that's vacant, then we owned the second one, and we've tried to keep buying those houses. But in the end, buying those houses was more difficult than it was buying, I thought he was a dentist, but he could have been an optometrist, I don't know. He wanted to retire, he wanted to sell the house, we wanted the house, we bought the house. The bank, they wanted to sell it, we wanted parking for the staff. They put it up for sale, we bought it. And the staff is excited because they'll be able to have their own parking over here where it shows. We're going to take the house down to have more visibility, have more parking. Part of it will all be brand-new, of course, but there'll be all-new lighting, all-new landscaping. So the parking lot will look brand-new. Kyle can tell you more. Well, I can tell you a lot, I suppose. The canopies, the canopies are not there because no one wants to drop, you know, their loved one off anymore and not have a canopy. And all of our nursing homes around the state, we have seven, have the canopies. We've never had the ability to do that here. We just didn't have the room because it takes up parking. Well, now we have 141 parking spots, which is so many more than we ever had. If you've had a loved one there, you know parking was not the easiest thing in the world. So now we have canopies, they can drive through, drop people off, actually in two places. The larger canopy goes right into rehabilitation, the smaller canopy goes into the skilled nursing unit.
There's a, there's a drive-off of Davenport, like a drop-off, little short loop, I guess. What's that for?
Well, that used to be, you want to do this? Oh, I'll do this. I, I'm here for a meeting tomorrow, and I told Kyle, well, I'll just come around, and I haven't done this for a while, if you need me, just, you know, I can pull in. That used to be the original entrance to Luther Manor. In 1968, when it was built, that was the entrance, and there's a large space over there, very large, where there was obviously a reception desk and everything. But we've never, we've never used that in the last many years that I can remember, ever, as a drop-off. And we won't do that. It's just, there's just not enough space in there, and so we're going to take some of it to build some expansion over there that's on the rehab, the new rehab part. Because, have you been in there? No? Your loved one been there? Currently, the chapel is in the back, that large section, that's going to be the new rehab gym. And then we're going to build the new chapel, or we're going to move the chapel up to the front, so that when you come in, the chapel will be right there.
Any further questions about Luther Manor?
There'll be about 60 construction persons, 60 to 75, when we're going onsite at any time. We're spending around $6.8 million on the renovations. Everything will be new. Everything inside will be brand-new. All the rooms, everything will be new. And I know this question is going to be asked, 42 weeks. It's a 42-week construction project? Like the gentleman from Menards, we have, I'd like to have your things that you have to approve, you can have mine. You know, you have all of the contingencies because the state wants to make sure that it's done according to the nursing home standards, and we have all of these things. Those are all in. We're, we think we'll be getting our certificate of need within maybe another month, and we're going to start no matter what. We need to do this, we want to do this right away, we're ready to start. I would have liked to have started a month ago, but we just can't, but we're very close. The money's in hand, we're not waiting for the money, we're just ready to go. You're going to ask Mike if everything's okay? We have a few MEP things that are yet to be, am I taking your thunder? We have a few MEP things that still need to be worked out. They're small, right? Thank you. They're small, and so you'll want to have the motion that says contingent upon those MEP things. Anything else? Terrific.
Quick question to me only because...
To Kyle or to myself?
It's not like it used to be.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you.
What is the current height under the drive-through canopy?
Oh, that's a Kyle question.
I'm going to have to bring out the plan.
Either that or you can read it off the chunky copy because I can't.
What sheet are you looking at? Four, eight, two K. It's 11 feet, 5/8 inches.
Is that tall enough for an emergency vehicle to get in? Well, the only reason I'm asking, I just did a drive-through canopy in Bedex, and I had to raise it from 11'4 to 12' foot, and that was a requirement from the city.
If I might, in, this particular site does not require it to be tall enough for a fire truck to go in.
No, you don't want a fire truck to go in.
No. Well, in some we do, in some we have to. And I mean, they're ginormous, they're just huge because they have to get in there. This is not one. We know that an emergency vehicle, like an ambulance and everything, will go under the large canopy in front. We do not expect it, nor is it required that we have to go under both canopies. The second canopy, the smaller one, is more of a convenience canopy, but the first one, it will go under.
Okay. Do you ever have shuttle buses come in to take residents on outings or anything?
Only small vans. Never, never bus buses. Small vans that have lifts, support lifts.
I'm, I'm...
No, it's a great question.
Want to make sure you got enough clearance that someone doesn't run in.
It's a great question, and the architect, these are the questions I ask the architect, and he goofed once, I know he won't goof again. No question in my mind. That goof was on him. But it's a great question.
Further questions?
Completion date?
42 weeks from start.
Forty-two weeks from start.
Starting and, starting and completion date?
Let's use October 1st.
October 1st.
So 42 weeks from there would be... 42 weeks is six, six months, so...
Forty-two weeks is more than six months.
Ten months.
Ten months.
Well, actually, it's about 10 months.
Ten months.
So we're looking at...
So it would be complete the end of July. End of July. Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Faust. You mentioned signage is an issue that may be addressed at a later time, do we...
Yeah, we need to work that out. Because it's in an RO1 district, the signage is only 25 square feet for each side of the building, and because of the setback for the highway, they're talking about possibly a larger sign. There's two options there. Part of the property is B1. If the sign was put on the B1 property, which is the lot across the street, it could be much larger. The other option would be to go to the zoning board of appeals, and ask for a variance for the sign.
So, is there a need for us to deal with contingent?
No, there really isn't a need for you to address the signage.
And engineering approval?
Contingent on engineering, again, they had a few things that they were trying to sort out.
So if there are, no further questions, entertain a motion on this case. Site plan review for Luther Manor.
Do I see, or do I not see lighting on the addition on the other side of Morrison Street?
Will there be any additional lighting?
Yeah, there... There will be lighting for the parking lot, for safety. The electrical engineer is currently drawing up the photometric plan. Once that's planned available, we'll be sending that to Mike.
If you remember back a few meetings ago, we did have another case, and actually, our ordinance does not require lighting at all. But, any lighting that is onsite, needs to be down-facing, and with the photometric study, we can tell whether it affects any neighboring properties or not.
Well, in, on C1, if I'm reading this correctly, because it is pretty small, it's remove light posts. It's like three light posts be removed, on that property on the other side of Morrison.
Yeah. Those light posts currently wouldn't meet the requirement of downward direction and full cutoff, and they're, they're probably about six feet tall, so not ideal for lighting the parking lot, as we see fit, and it doesn't meet the ordinance. So those are going to be removed, and they'd be replaced with...
You could make that part of your motion, if you'd like, that lighting beat city requirements.
Which is nothing.
Which is nothing.
Okay.
Well, there is if there is lighting, but it's not required.
Okay.
I'm moving up to case 150075, with a completion date of 42 months.
Forty-two weeks.
Forty-two weeks? Forty-two weeks after it starts October 1st. Additionally, is any lighting, new lighting, that meets all city requirements?
And contingent upon engineering approval.
And contingent upon engineering.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Boom. If you care. So, we are now at case number 076, site plan review for Family Dollar Store.
Okay, my name is John Maury with D&amp;M Site, and I'm here representing, we're the engineers representing the developer, Cagle Development, out of Chattanooga, Tennessee. Also, I have with me Clarence Rivette, who is the owner, the, where Rivette Group is the owner of the balance of the property, and you might have a couple of questions on some of that stuff. What we have proposed is a 9100 square-foot Family Dollar facility, on the corner of Genesee and Michigan in the city. This has come up in the, in the past, from another developer, looking to do the exact same thing, a Family Dollar store here on the corner. The lot that we're, that we're going to create out of, this is the old Aunt Millie's Bread site, that's been demoed. The property that we're creating is a one-acre parcel, on the southerly end of this property, and the way that we have it configured, is there would be two easement agreements. You can see it better on the actual photography survey. We're creating two ingress and egress easements, one on Michigan, and one on the Genesee Avenue side. We did a traffic study a couple of years ago on this site, and dealing with the engineers and the city, we're only going to have one curb cut, for possibly three sites, depending on who comes along. There's been some interest from others. We would end up dividing the balance of this property, which is almost two acres, 1.8 acres, into two more lots, with this joint agreement, this joint ingress and egress access. Okay, the traffic study was quite thorough, and... Was I too happy with the traffic study that Don built this?
No, I did not get a copy.
Okay, I will get that to you, but the conclusion was, obviously, only one curb cut, and so, we're, we are going to share those two curb cuts. The property is zoned at Riverfront Mixed Use, RMU, and so, we do have the use by right on this. The Riverfront Commission did do a review on a Family Dollar back in January, that was just a different developer. Basically, it was the same configuration, we just had a different, different developer for the, for that one. The parking requirements, are one space for every 250 square feet, so 37 spaces required. The site plan shows 38, with two handicap park, parking spots, and really, the kicker to the whole site, was the Riverfront District's review, and this one, signed by Herb Spence, kind of went through some of the things that the city was looking for, with the decorative fencing, the landscape requirements, and then, the brick veneer of the building. The city realizes that this corner is a, is a pretty, actually, the traffic study came back, this is the busiest intersection in the city. And so, the, the Riverfront District, the commission basically, you know, wants to go a little above and beyond with some of those requirements, to keep, keep the aesthetics similar to the Walgreens, the Rite Aid across the street, and, and, you know, the additional landscaping on it. I think that, you know, we obviously were served by all the utilities, very, very busy intersection with utilities, that's big interceptor sewers running through there, we have railroad right-of-way to the, to the east, we have MDOT right-of-way for 675 on-ramp, it doesn't affect this particular parcel, but this is a pretty busy, busy little corner right here. Building height, 22 feet 8 inches, so it's below the required, the requirement there, and, right now, we're, we're, we're dealing with the city. Michael's finally got off vacation, and he's going through his stack, and Beth has been on vacation also, and so, we're going through with the city right now, fine-tuning some of the, you know, the utility information. So other than that...
I would like to point out that ingress and egress, where they're located on the edge, and it'll be shared ingress and egress, is something that engineering talked to the previous developer about, and required, so that there wasn't an entrance closer to the intersection. They didn't want anything closer to that intersection. So that's something that was required by engineering, and was met.
Oh yeah, and we do have a small deceleration lane, so that the car is able to, you know, start getting off the road sooner, and, and, you know, get into the site.
John, how wide is that driveway there? About 40 feet?
Can't see that? Let me borrow your glasses.
You'll need more than that.
It is wide, wide enough, it's got to be at least 35 feet, because we do have a right-in, and then a right-out, and a left-out, also on that. The developer originally wanted their own curb cut, and, and Clarence, you know, basically said, that's, that's not going to happen. It has to facilitate the rest of the needs for this property. So, right now, the configuration of that driveway, right now, isn't going to be the final configuration, as the rest of the development, you know, comes to, comes to being...
Are you talking about both driveways, or just the one off of Michigan?
Say again.
You're talking about just the one off of Michigan?
Yeah.
Yeah. In your notes, Mike, you made reference to the fact that the developers made some headway in meeting the recommendations of the commission?
They did, and when you came in this evening, there was another site plan in front of you. That was the landscaping plan that I received after I sent packets out. It appears that the main concerns of the Riverfront Commission have been met. There is a lot more. If you look at that plan, along the parking area on Mich, on Genesee, especially, there is a lot of greenery between the sidewalk and the parking area, and that's one of the requirements of the Riverfront Commission, is that they didn't want to see the grills of the cars from the street. And I think that that'll handle that. There are three areas of fencing that are put in there, that are not, or actually, I believe there's three, yeah, three areas of fencing that are put in there, two on Genesee and one on Michigan, and the design for that is similar to the Walgreens parking lot across the street. I believe they said it was used from Cardinal Development, which is used out in the township, but it's very close to what is at Walgreens now. And then, the other issue, the main issue with the Riverfront Commission, is that they didn't want the standard Family Dollar, that had the brick facade on the front, and pretty much a pole biser and structure to the rear of it, and this is brick, I believe, all four sides. So, I think that they met a lot of what the Riverfront Commission was asking for. I think that it blends pretty well with the Riverfront guidelines, probably, for a Family Dollar, probably as well as could be done. I, I think one of the other requirements of the Riverfront guidelines, were access for pedestrians, and there's access for pedestrians, both on Genesee and on Michigan, I believe. So, I think that they've done much better than the last developer, in developing what the Riverfront Commission wanted to have.
Mike, is there a stipulation on how much fencing they need to have?
No, there isn't. It just, everything is very general, there isn't...
There's only two small parts of fencing.
I'm seeing three, but they're kind of scattered around.
Yeah, that's similar to what's happening over at Rite Aid and at Walgreens. I'm on the Riverfront Commission as well, and the first developer that presented to the Riverfront Planning Commission, the, the whole commission had an issue, like Mike said, about how the whole corner was going to look. You have a little bit more of a town feel across the street, at the Walgreens and the Rite Aid, they did, they have like sections of fencing to kind of break up the, the parking area, and give it a little bit of a, a little bit more texture to the landscape, along with some of the elevations change around the, both of the structures across the street. So basically, what they wanted to do is, they wanted to say, okay, Family Dollar, kind of mirror what's going around on the other corners. So, they weren't happy with the first development, because we had a corrugated steel side against Michigan, and Michigan is highly visible there, and you had a blank building, a blank sign, and it didn't just look, it didn't look appealing to anybody there, and they were looking at other Family Dollars. I know they, one of, one of the commissioners went to Indiana, and one of the, Indiana Family Dollars did not look like anything that was in Michigan, it was a full brick structure. So, that just caused a lot of conversation and debate about how it should really look in our area. It looks much better than the other one, I can tell you that right now.
The concern about windows, though?
The concern about windows on the Michigan side, is what they, if, if they weren't even windows, they were thinking about, you know, like, across the street at Walgreens, there was like, window lighting at, at the top, or making it appear like there was a window there.
I believe, weren't there some windows on the side of this, John? I don't think so.
No, it looks like there's, on the actual third page, it looks like there's possibly windows on the front, facing Genesee, right?
Let's let me see, here's the illustration. Oh, that's what we see here in the other section.
John, which side is that that has the big Family Dollar on the side?
That would be Michigan.
The bottom one.
This would actually be...
That's facing...
Which is Michigan.
Uh, wait a minute.
This building is facing Michigan.
Michigan would be east.
Oh, south. Okay. That is actually facing west. The Family Dollar, oh, is that the...
This is facing north.
North? Okay. Okay.
This is obviously the front facing Michigan. This is the rear facing the railroad tracks. But there isn't any windows on this?
On the, on the one facing Michigan? Can you put another sign that's a Family Dollar or something on the Michigan side?
Yeah, if you notice, I think that they would do that.
Or maybe a full window.
The main entrance faces Genesee?
Right.
No, Michigan faces Michigan.
That's facing Genesee.
Genesee. I think that's not true. We need to clarify this. The top photo here, the main entrance, faces Genesee, doesn't it?
Yeah, Genesee.
Yeah, the handicap parking's facing Genesee.
Genesee. So it's the Michigan facade that shows no windows.
I think, I think it might be a little turn around.
Oh, so then the Family Dollar would be facing Michigan.
The Family Dollar is facing Michigan.
Oh, the small one.
The small one's facing Michigan.
Okay, alright.
I think I did your presentation for you. Family Dollar faces Michigan.
Wait a minute.
The small Family Dollar.
The small Family Dollar.
The main facade facing Genesee.
The bottom picture down there faces Michigan.
I'm looking at the, at the top, the top elevation.
This.
That's, that's, that's Genesee.
That faces Genesee.
That's right here.
Okay. And the lower one down there faces north?
Which one? The one at the bottom?
Right, right at the bottom.
That one's facing Michigan, which is facing west.
West.
This is facing west. Those one would be the railroad tracks. Michigan, Genesee.
Do we have further questions on the project?
I have, I have a comment. Even though we don't stipulate how much fencing is required, the only spot that bothers me is along Genesee, where you've got the row of hedges, and you've got two chunks of fence to one side, and then the rest of the parking lot that faces Genesee has no fencing across it. I would prefer to see that fencing extend to cover all of those spaces.
I would agree. That would look better.
And by fencing, you're referring to the black rod iron?
You know where I'm talking about? Right here, right here. They've got it right there, but then they stopped it halfway across those parking spaces. I'm proposing they take it all the way across.
The Riverfront Commission referred to the Walgreens facility as an example. And the fencing that they have is this kind of segmented, almost aesthetic kind of fencing, any kind of functional fencing. Not unlike what's on these drawings, I think.
Like an interrupted fence.
Yes.
Doesn't show the fencing.
Don't you have a large copy? This is what was brought tonight.
I'll get another copy.
What was, what was originally submitted, that did not show any landscaping or fencing. That's why they gave us these.
John, is that, is that a reasonable request to extend that fencing? Absolutely. I don't think that's a deal coming at all. And I know Clarence wants to see this development, you know, be the shining star so that he's got the rest of this property that's, that's going to be starting. That's right.
I think maybe the building would be the shining star to spur the other development.
It would be the function of this, this roadway.
To gain access to the front doors of the store from the sidewalk along Genesee.
I mean, the business is for the other, not people.
I would doubt very, very much that there would be much pedestrian traffic here or here.
But that was the stipulation by the Riverfront Development.
Further discussion, do I hear?
Yeah, we're probably looking at midsummer, if we can get started in October, and get some concrete poured. They can get going on their building this winter. And we're probably looking at putting some asphalt down in June. So I'd say midsummer is probably a good...
August 1st?
Yeah.
I'm hoping for a mild winter. You'll be tempted by...
I don't know, that farmer's almanac isn't telling me what I want to hear again this year. Mike, and all the lighting will be compliant?
Yes, it will. All of the other Family Dollar stores, the lighting is pretty similar. And it's all, all means seen.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, before I put in the motion, are we going to be including the motion fixing that fence issue? Are we going to do that? Extend the fence? Okay. All right. All right.
But before you do, you are recommending contingent on engineering approval?
Yes.
Proceed.
Okay, I move that we approve site plan 15007 for the Family Dollar at Genesee and Michigan with the contingents of engineering approval. And the other point was the fence to be extended in front of the parking area along Genesee with the completion date of
But point of clarification, was the intention to extend the fence all the way to the other entry?
No, no, just in front of the parking area.
Just across the parking spaces.
Right now, so we got one, two, three, four spots.
The fence would be right at the parking area along Genesee.
Yeah.
Motion on the floor? Do I hear support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
A vote. Motion carries. Do we have any old business, Mr. Faust?
The only thing under old business is if anyone else wants to attend the Michigan Planner classes, I need to know probably by the end of the week. I realize that's a large commitment, but let me know because I think next week I have to... I'm sorry? We could use two more people to attend. The city will pay for two more. Okay.
I will be attending now. Further information, if you have any questions, I'm ready for you. Either one. I'll be there. Oh, we don't want you to do that. I'll give you my notes. I see your point.
Stay where you are.
I see no one here for public comment. Therefore, we are ad-jorned, ladies and gentlemen.